How old do you think hurt is? Kirk.
Kirk next door.
One of them was usually.
Okay.
And he was moving around.
All right, I have seven o'clock. I'd like to order the regular scheduled council meeting Tuesday, March twenty first, two thousand twenty three. Join me in the.
I'm glad to leave and see the government of the United States. Thank you for the thought of the Lord. My nation. In this world with.
Connected to mobile device.
All right, so. Doctor, item number three, Zoom instruction, Robert.
All right, good evening, everyone. As always, people that are here, if you guys are doing special, we have speakers in the ceiling, so. Make sure we keep the talk down to a minimal so that people can hear on Zoom. And anyone that's with us via Zoom, if you have questions, be sure to hit the. React and button and raise your hand or post your comment in the chat, and we'll get to it when the time is appropriate.
All right, thanks, Robert. One note, Councilman Dan Ripley is on his way to the lead meeting and said he a couple minutes late, so. Item four. Approval of meeting agenda.
Mister President, I'd like to approve the meeting agenda with the change of moving item seven and eight. Ahead of monthly reports for our discussion at the end of last year.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
George, I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried. All right, we'll move items seven and eight above monthly reports. Moving on, item five, approval of. The monthly reports you already received minutes from February twenty one, twenty twenty. I believe that should be three.
On the agenda.
On the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to those matters or not that we entertain or motion to approve?
I have no changes or changes to your approval.
Smiley, also.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carried. All right, item five B, March voucher register and warrant, Nathan.
Yeah, hello, everybody. How are you doing tonight? Well, first, I'd like to present our voucher for the month of March. There are thirty nine warrants coming out of the general account. For a total. And the general account for seven thousand, seven seventy eight and thirty five cents. Out of the sewer accounts on the market, fourteen warrants. For a total thirteen thousand, one hundred twenty one dollars and seventy eight cents. The total for this voucher for the month of March. And the date we ended it's three seventeen is a date that I. The total for the entire voucher is fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars and thirteen cents. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, any questions for Nathan? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
This is Brad. Motion to approve.
Molly, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion carried. All right, so. Looking something that Dan is going to bring about. He's not here. People listen to.
I'm sorry. Keep our order.
All right, moving on to seven B, the schedule update.
Oh, I don't think I have a side of this. Um, okay. So. Going other than, I don't think I heard from Molly. Uh, because send an email that hour and kind of.
I didn't have anything to add.
Okay, um. Darren and George and even Brian wanted to look into further. So basically, just to summarize, I kind of put all the fees together. Including your suggestions for other areas around us. And including the ones that I researched, some of them overlap compared. But this shows, and I can hand this out afterwards, so that way you guys can take my home. But it shows our current, our proposed, some of the increase, and then all the other kinds. One thing to note on this form. Is a lot of the communities that don't have a have a means in here, but actually round their fees up under the billing inspected in us. Because they operate on bully departments. Where I suppose the account itself. The only other thing to know and to consider. If we want to play with these. If you can, it's can give me some feedback and what, you know, what you guys would think. I know when I'm looking through a lot of the views on the ones that I do have numbers for, a lot of the times it's plus. You know, mailings and additional costs that are accrued. The plan for our fee schedule is to actually wrap that up into the initial fee. And account for all that stuff. So that's, there's going to be a difference there as well. So. If you have any questions, when you guys take a look at this, feel free to get back with me on it. The numbers are flexible, so it's whatever you guys feel that's appropriate. The biggest thing that I have are the VZA and the planning commission fees. If anything, if we drop those by anything. Who's out of pocket to Bill Hannah about it? And then it's like, well, town probably needs to. Take on some of those fees in those boards. And if that were the case, and I probably said they have to take on the members' presence, but on those boards, the members' presence actually is a minority fee. So like in an appeal and everything. I outside of a breakdown, I didn't print that off, but I have a breakdown of what it costs for a VZA meeting and what it costs for a PC meeting as well. And a PC meeting is, because we have seven members, it's like eleven hundred dollars. Just been cost if we do a notice and everything based off of. Average information and a VZA is. Just around eight hundred dollars. Because of everything that's got to go into it.
So, Robert, on that sheet, if you could maybe capture some of those functions, just at the bottom, so whoever is looking at it is aware. Of some of those things that you've articulated, maybe just put assumptions.
Yeah, well, how about I, I, I reflect that and then I can email out to you each individually. That's how I got on there and now I need to get a feeling that everyone is going to move forward with it tonight. Put anything in place yet, so.
But just. What, what does your spreadsheet show or where, where we split with?
Oh. Put it up on the screen.
I certainly have the. I think I can go back in my computer.
But, Mola, didn't you have that statistics in the presentation?
Uh, I, I had, I think I had what our current was to what was proposed. This one actually puts in other communities that was spreadsheet too, so I didn't have that in that original thing. But going through it, the one that we matched closely with are obviously caramel and Indianapolis. We're toward two of the communities that. If we look at Stewman, City of April, Auburn, the Cal County. Even Jasper. Those are considerably lower, but if you. Again, if you take a look at their ordinances that they're enforcing, they're also. Quite different communities. So what we're asking of our community is a lot more on the level of what, like, caramel residents are being asked to do in their neighborhoods. So. It, it, it's hard to weigh it out based off of population and city size and you got to weigh it out of what we're actually asking our residents to do. And how much time it takes to. Review an application, so. But overall, it, it's going to show us being conservative higher than the surrounding areas. And I like, so I even put the percent of, percent of the increase, but in most cases, I think the average is one of the hundred percent increase. So it sounds like a lot, and you do it in that number. But. There are other evidence we can look at too, if you guys feel that this isn't appropriate either, but. We got to start from somewhere for sure.
Robert, I don't know if this falls under your heading or not, but the installation of a new grinder pump or a new construction. Is, is there a fee in that schedule for it or is that somewhere else?
That's our steward. Our sort of.
Did anyone know what that, the seventy five hundred, thirty eight hundred total? Seventy eight, okay. It, it looks like we just installed a grinder at three thirty five tenor.
Right, yeah.
And the invoice was thirty five hundred, so we're covered in that department.
That was just a. Installation invoice, I did not include the grinder.
Oh, it didn't? Okay, so addition to that, okay. We may want to reassess that.
Oh, yeah, man, that's established by the sewer ordinance. Which is why I kept it out of our zoning and planning piece. And that's all, that's all I have right now.
So then the plan would be for us to all take another look at what you put together and come to the next meeting?
Yeah, based off of your emails. Wasn't, I didn't get much constructive criticism from them other than Darren wanted. We thought, he thought when the last meeting I was supposed to look into a little bit more, which. That's my, my fault if that was the case, because I didn't know that until I emailed you. And then based off of Brian and George, as we know, they wanted to continue looking a little bit more, so. And of course, I spoke to you individually, so with that consensus, it's like, ready to move forward, yeah.
And I can state my concerns. At this point in time, too, just several all around was on the same page. One of my concerns is that some of these that are going up. That were scheduled to go up. Continue to go up. We also have. Other things related to the schools that are possibly coming up, and we have several residents here. To Molly's point. That aren't fixed incomes, and I think we should be very diligent in any of these schedules that we're looking at to raise because of that. In addition to that. I understand that we knew we were going to get some pushback from some of the builders in the area on the fee schedule. And I've got a concern that I don't want to. Present Clear Lake is difficult to work for, for the builders. Because I want our residents to have a good group of builders that are going to come out to Clear Lake. And work in this area. And it is a concern of mine hearing the feedback that we got from some of those builders, even though we knew what it was, that the fees were high. I don't want to eliminate opportunities for the residents. When it comes to service providers.
I've got some comments I'd like to share now that I'm here. Thanks for being awake. So I think that the, I would say that the, the fees are more driven by the complexity of the ordinance itself. We as a community did elect to move forward. With the UDO that we have today, and that UDO looks. More along the lines of a UDO that. Would be in place for a large city. And so when Robert is looking at other. Ordinances in the area, of course, he's not going to find much that's comparable. And so the oversight costs. Which include project compliance and variance requests. Those costs are really associated. With individual resident projects. Which really shouldn't be borne by the community. At large. They should be borne by the, the project itself. And so this, this cost that we're talking about relative to fees. Is really about the oversight that Robert and the zoning department. Provides relative to the ordinance that he's being asked. To ensure compliance. So with that said. The, also, the other perspective that we need to keep in mind. Is that these, these costs associated with. The VZA, the planning commission. And the zoning administration office are funded out of the general fund. And we are, we are currently eroding the cash balance in the general fund year over year. If we, if we stay with the structure. This was born out of the work that we did last year. On budgets the last couple of years, so. I feel strongly that we as a council don't have the option of doing nothing. And I'm not saying that we should, that we should take the fees as proposed. We need to strike the right balance going forward. Thanks.
I, I agree with Dan. I don't think that the, the community itself should bear any of the costs for somebody requiring some kind, kind of action. But I do understand that there are people on fixed incomes, but. And they're going to be impacted by this if they share the cost of something that they're not doing, so. Yeah, I. This one, this one tricky, because I know that it, right now. Somebody else is subsidizing, you know, the committees, unfortunately. So, yes, we do have to do something, and it's better to do it quicker. Like I was. In conversation with Robert, you know, I want this to. We, we got to find a point and start somewhere and then start tracking it. Figure out what the cost is. I, I think that, you know, we should move forward with something. Agreed that these are going to be high, but. We don't start now, when are we going to start?
Personal experience, I can say I would have been in a pickle. At a VZA fees than what we're proposed, when I have to deal with my situation.
So then we, the plan is to re, to look at Robert's list and come back to the next meeting. And vote on. Is our game plan? And we could always pull a section out. If we can't gain agreement and move forward with components of what's being proposed. Does that seem reasonable? Old Dan, Robert?
Yeah. Having missed half the conference.
Well, I'm just saying, if we can't gain alignment. On, I mean, how many items do you have listed there on your grid?
Um.
At Rockwood, a dozen?
More than a dozen.
Okay.
Probably, let's go with thirty.
Okay, so we'll go with thirty if we can all gain agreement on twenty five. We, you know, whatever those factors have to be, and if there's five that we're, we need to have more discussion, we can do that.
Well, they're kind of all sectioned out by like improvement, VZA, the PC stuff. So that way. It kind of breaks them up a little bit.
So I was just going to ask if Robert has feedback. Sufficient to. You know, take a position, review these and pay for them for us to consider.
And my, my personal feedback?
Do you have a collective set of feedback?
Oh, yeah.
From which to take another look at the fee structure. And offer a, a. Different position next month.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Then I'm happy.
And we're all happy.
I just wanted to make, he was walking away with the, with the, with the. And my feedback to him did state hand to see, no, it wasn't that I was opposed to them in general.
Oh. It's always, anytime you're talking about money, it touches stuff everywhere. It's fine. But yeah, I have enough feedback to be able to kind of come up with my position too. Now, granted, I don't live here, so. Don't, don't, don't burn me at the stake.
Anybody else?
Whoops.
Yeah. Dan, for. Your information, the agenda would change, so that we're taking seven and eight of the. Monthly reports, so. I know that you were championing seven A, so we tabled that, and so you're a rifle. So if you want to take over it.
Okay, thanks. So during the February council meeting, I presented the option of us having. As to the town to set the CCD fund percentage of five percent. As opposed to fluctuating with real estate values and resetting it several years. Later. Our actions to reestablish the CCD fund every several years communicates the importance of the fund to our ability to. Provide services to our community, which includes the safety and security of, given the Marshals. Department, the fire protection, the sewer. Sanitation roads and kind of functioning town hall. During our discussion, council member George Schinkel asked if there were needs identified for the additional funds. And tonight I'd like to respond to that by virtue of having the updated infrastructure projects list that I had prepared last year. And presented to council. But a little bit different this year is. Is I wanted to add more of a forward looking assessment to it, so I added what I'm labeling risk assessment. Which essentially takes a look at each of those. Projects with regards to. The risk of issues occurring, should those projects not be implemented. And I'd like to review that tonight, so if you could bring that up. Yeah, it's the one that's not very eligible unless you see it on the screen. What's in this room?
I think it's very colorful.
Yeah, all right, well, there was, I tried to do my mouth as best I can.
Okay, I'd like, let's first of all start. So just as a refresher of what we're looking at here in this table. Is we have the project descriptions over here on the left. We have a rough estimate of the, of the cost for that project. We have the various funds that could be used to fund the cost of the project. That's not to say that all the funds would be required. It's not to say that one. One fund, but it's just to say that. When you look across our, our funds, they have certain. Application for certain things, and, and so it's important to recognize. That which the spreadsheet does. And then. Last year, we had a set of objectives, so there's a column there that ties it back to an objective. And then a short description of the project itself. The new, the new thing that I had, which if you want to scroll to the bottom, just a familiar rise pose with the spreadsheet. Is a five by five colored chart. And what this five by five colored chart. Does is it represents each of the projects. In a green area, a yellow area, or a red area. And those green, yellow, and red are based on. Two parameters, a likelihood of occurrence. And a consequence should, should it occur. And the one that jumps out is project number nine. The reason that it.
Can I interrupt on this?
Yes.
On the grid, already got likelihood and consequences. What determined and or who determined the likelihood and the consequences? What fed into? Those components, that you know?
So right now you've got my assessment.
Okay. Which you put a note on there or did you?
If, if the tool is favorable, if the council believes the tool is usable. If if the tool uh is favorable, if the council believes the tool is usable, favorable. Um to mature it, what we would do is go into each of the various categories of likelihood and consequence. And we would define those specifically uh to our needs. So you're giving, you're getting my perception uh based on being on infrastructure for the last several years. Um so uh the one that jumps out is is project number nine, uh and the reason that it jumps out, that is uh the project. By which we are um putting in um. Uh eliminating the direct electrical feeds to some of our sewer grinders, which is uh a same, a safety issue. For our personnel, so. Uh the consequence there um is a five, just to to continue to use this example is because it could. Could actually kill somebody, um so it's a very high consequence should that risk occur. And then uh likelihood uh is a three. Because this isn't anything new. Guy has been dealing with this risk for some time. He's clearly got some process in place by which uh he's been able to protect himself and others. Uh and so uh the likelihood uh is a three, in my opinion. But that's kind of how this is, this is viewed. Um so with uh each and every passing year on a lot of these projects, the other takeaway is. In my per, in my perception, we're in yellow on most of the others, so the way you would wanna look at this chart. Is that any uh set of projects or project that's listed in a yellow range. That might increase in likelihood and jump into the red blocks. Are probably the second, next in line priorities for to address. And then years go by, I believe the likelihood is naturally going to increase uh if not addressed. Okay? So based uh based on this work, um let me pause, see if there's any other questions. And again, my focus here is to try to, try to put the community in a forward looking. Uh position such that we can somewhat define our future uh on these things. Um hearing no additional questions, and I'll take you, your eyes off that spreadsheet for a moment and just say. That the CCD fund is unique in nature in that. With the recent uh legal changes, the CCD fund can be applied to uh any project. It's not, it's not restricted to a certain scope of work unlike the other funds. And so I've established uh the fact that we have both the need, the precedence for reestablishing the CCD. Uh fund, uh typically we've done that on approximately every three years. Uh why didn't we do it? Because it's important, uh we need the funds and it's an important thing that we have to do up until this year. Where we have a legal law change in the Indiana codes that basically will just stick it at the five percent. And it'll stay there and it will then uh follow, the the money will then follow the uh. Appraisal values or the uh market values of our real estate. Um as a reminder, reestablishing the CCD fund now will result in a very small increase. Baker Tilly uh would be estimating that in its, in a, in a, in an accurate way. Uh they provided in the estimates on the order of five to ten. A uh on a two hundred thousand dollar uh for every two hundred thousand dollars um. And it would follow the uh, the real estate asset value year versus every year, except for a kind of. Verity weighting uh which will result in a larger similar year. So if we do it now, the point here is, is that it will just simply fluctuate on a very small amount. Uh per year, per resident. If we continue with the current approach and we wait for three years, we'll get a much bigger increase. When we reestablish the the fund. So it's almost uh in some regards, it would get less painful if we just set it from then, when it was, when it's a very small. I verify uh with Baker Tilly, um as I mentioned the last month that we were on a deadline with DLGF. If we're interested in doing this, that deadline is five, May thirty first. Baker Tilly uh is able to support that date if we make a decision uh yet this week. So um in that regard, Baker Tilly, I've uh I've brought back into tonight's package Baker Tilly's. Uh prepared engagement letter describing recommended services. And then not to exceed thirty-five hundred estimate. And and their, the not to exceed is, you know, covering something to increase, so. One should expect that it comes at less than thirty-five hundred. Um and that is for consideration by council, uh and and recommend starting that process, as I mentioned, later than. Than this uh Friday. Uh to meet the DLGF uh deadline, so. I'm not talking. Wait for some questions.
Okay, so Dan, I got two questions. If we don't do something tonight, we can approach this next year. We don't have to wait three years, correct?
Yes.
And we currently, as I look at the most recent fund report, we have three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in our CCD fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Without this change, is there currently and gonna be an ongoing CCD? Uh levy, and this change is just gonna move it up to the maximum. In that current levy is, actually my memory, or four, four point four eight cents. And I don't know if that's. Then, and the proposal would be to move it to five, five cents, in that format, yeah.
Any other questions? So I would say though, uh Molly, that the CCD funds that we currently see uh. Uh on the bank for records, uh you know, out of that will be the sixty M G.
And I look at the page and seeing what I, you know, I've broken all that down into what the twenty-five percent is for the town. So, thank you.
You know, as we look at the levies, that's, and you indicated this, that is a really small part. Of the ultimate change, uh last year alone, we had a fifteen percent increase in our. About thirteen percent increase in our set valuation. And so uh the levy goes, is a little bit of it. But when you just add the assess valuation change, it's a significant increase in taxes. And the town of Clear Lake, as I indicated in prior town council meetings, certainly leads the uh. The greatest tax and bottom line tax increase. Uh than anybody in our neighborhood, including those other tax bodies that levy us, such as the county. Uh the library, uh the school is exempt, we have a new referendum coming out of the peers. Uh and the township are all much less than what we're doing for ourselves. And so this is just gonna be another piece on top of an already rapidly increasing tax burden here in the town.
And and uh is that from last year or?
No, it's uh the comparison is uh twenty, our tax rate twenty-three versus twenty-two.
Dan, what's the amount between that point for the four point four eight and a five? What's that dollar amount?
That's uh.
Where it come to us?
Yeah, so it's uh point five two cents for hundred thousand. Okay. So I would like to move to open for public comment and question based on that discussion and new information.
This is Brent, I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify and say aye.
Aye, aye.
All the same, fine.
Don. I don't, don't pretend to know all that you're talking about, to be honest with you, but just for an average. Person on the lake, I mean, it's what fifty point five two cents per hundred thousand, what does that mean? In terms of. The additional amount for an average month, you know, instead of the.
Uh just give me one second, I can add in that one, I'm sorry. Uh twenty thousand, then we go to six fifty, so about thirty bucks. On the average for the property.
Okay, thank you.
Depending on your sets valuation, if you're several million, it's gonna be substantially greater if you're a hundred thousand, it's gonna be potentially less.
That was based off of what?
Uh it was based off the uh five cents per hundred.
No, I'm not, what five, you didn't put that outside?
Uh well, like, it was the average, okay, I I took our total assess valuation. For the county, for the town of Clear Lake, use it an average of six hundred fifty property owners that's in the neighborhood. Uh somewhere between six fourteen and and something greater than six fifty, just backing of an average.
Any other questions?
I don't, it's just uh, it's so if your property was valued at at six hundred thousand dollars, then. Like the, the cost to the, that would be thirty dollars. Uh it's, it's almost insignificant. And and especially when compared to the potential benefit of saving somebody's life.
But I'm not sure about the life-saving feature here, um the the item in red. Uh that is proposed has an estimated cost of fifty thousand. We have four hundred and.
Yeah, it's almost three eighty nine, like.
Almost four hundred, always four hundred thousand in the bank. And we need fifty to take care of the red, so we are in solid footing.
Uh yeah, I think that that. The the project that was the example is just an example. I mean, there's always gonna be. An ice storm or a flood or a fire or something, so. Yeah, it, having the funds available to meet. Needs um is a totally a very good idea.
I I think it's a stretch to say that whether we do this or do not do approve this CCD. We save or don't save lives. I think that's a big stretch. I don't think we can make that commitment. And I also think it doesn't mean we won't do projects that need to be done. This is a point on increasing your tax to have money, more money available to use. As we as a council deem necessary.
Yep.
Correct, Dan?
Yep, and and the projects bill more than what we have. And uh you know, the timing is uh we can do it any year we choose. We don't have to do it next year. Um uh but it would be the following year that you would collect the funds, so you you do lag, it would.
It's a big gap.
There'd be, there'd be a lag.
Thanks.
We also have other contingency payments, uh funds available, such as the rainy day, which is. We hope not to touch, but it's there just in case something catastrophic occurs. And all the more reason for a healthy rainy day fund.
And what Todd's gonna present later today, we're looking at something that's less than what we had initially budgeted to. Now those could go over too. Um I think we also have, I just. I think we need to be very, it was public comment, I'll just.
Um I couldn't see it real well, but it looked like a lot of the projects that were on that chart. Were things that were pertaining to the town hall. That um some people saw as improvements and some people saw as not necessary. So um you know, you wanna address that?
Uh that was one project that dealt with the town hall.
There are several on there.
If you'd like to go through the list in in detail, and we have.
But there was maintenance building and a couple other things that I saw very quickly.
Yeah, so I didn't cover all the color coding, but uh the gray shaded was decided to defer to some. You know, we decided that we didn't wanna pursue any of the new buildings, so those are the gray out items. The blue, the blue shaded items are ones that were awarded and and completed and funded. So those are effectively off the list, so the only ones remaining are the uh. Anything with a yellow or red uh colored code and uh most common. Those are the only ones that are still active and out for consideration. And so you'll see in there, cap, there is a uh. Um still the uh project that dealt with insulation and things of that nature on the panel hall, that is absolutely correct. And the only thing that really, when I was looking at that particular project uh relative to the risk assessment. Was the elements of uh the backup generator and the additional sub funk to uh, you know, protect our. Uh electronic systems in the town hall and also the storage areas downtown, downstairs. That really uh drove the uh the risk assessment on that particular one. Yeah. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Brent, I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Okay, so I would like to make one last comment about this subject, uh and that is uh by uh authorizing. Uh Baker Tilly to do this work, doesn't mean it's a decision by which council approves the uh. The increase or the reestablishment. Uh what this will do is provide us with the, with additional information as far as the impact. And their residents. Um and uh and also the public meetings, but we'll gain, we'll garner more uh public sentiment. On the issue. Um given all of that, then I would, I would uh like to make a motion to authorize Baker Tilly. Form and recommended services at the NTP price of thirty-five hundred. Uh to uh reestablish the CCD fund by the required May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three DLGF deadline. Alright, I have a motion, right on second. And right now, it's in the uh the motion. Thank you.
I think you wrote the item eighty.
And I just like to come, but you'll still be moving forward with further expanding the current.
Yeah, Dan.
The infrastructure, just. I mean, I think those are still the things that we need to.
Sure, I think it's a good tool, thanks.
Thanks, Molly. I think it's a good tool, run it, let's see what's on the rider.
Yeah, and I'd like to, you know, guide a, you know, right, you know, what his priority on some of those items, since many of them. Fall right under his rounds, you know. Not that I don't, just regarding your assessment.
Oh, I'm all in with more, more inputs and that. Eighteen, road committee update. Okay, at uh February's council meeting, um council approved the uh. A road committee to be established, um we outlined uh specific goals and objectives to this road committee. a road committee to be established, um, we outlined, uh, specific goals and objectives for this road committee. I'm happy to report that, uh, I have, uh, picked off the road committee, it's comprised of six persons, uh, there is one council person being myself and four residents, uh, those four residents were, as we discussed in the council meeting, there were no changes there. Uh, one D, one representative from D L Z, which is Todd. And then, uh, we had one additional plan, just so you know, which was a paving contractor, uh, it was recommended that I contact Andy Brooks, I did, um, there was feeling, uh, or concern of a conflict of interest, knowing that they were gonna bid bid the work, so I did not pursue that any further because it really applies to all those. Okay. Um, we did make, uh, arrangements within the structure of our committee to allow for subject matter experts to be brought in on, uh, particular topics, and so the feelings are there is, uh, if we have a particular question about, uh, some aspect of the road that we want to get a contractor's position, we can reach out on that particular question and, and try and get an answer, okay? Uh, we have a kickoff meeting on, uh, March sixteenth, uh, in that kickoff meeting, uh, we established a set of rules of procedure and how we were going to run the meeting, uh, and, uh, we reviewed the background and information where, which was essentially, uh, January and February's briefings to council. Uh, the meeting, uh, schedule was finalized. Um, and I want to make a special note on that, uh, schedule, uh, that it was, uh, put together, uh, being mindful, uh, to provide, uh, the committee output to, um, council uh, prior to, uh, their next need, which is the CCMG, uh, application for this year. So it's our hopes that we'll provide recommended, uh, products to be used uh, to prioritize the segments of roads that we want to, uh, apply for a grant on. Um, a prior, uh, process by which we will assess um, the, uh, base of the roads to make sure that the structure is meeting, uh, the, the appropriate, uh, requirements amongst other things, okay? Um, the minutes and the rules of procedure are being posted on the webpage, you can actually go there now and see the outputs. Where do you find that? You find it under department superintendent, and, uh, on that, uh, particular page is a blue stripe at the very top called road committee materials. And, uh, you'll be able to see, um, uh, the minutes from our last meeting and I'll post, uh, subsequent minutes, uh, for the various meetings. The schedule is fairly aggressive, uh, we are meeting twice a month, sometimes three times a month. Uh, every Thursday evening from five to seven. And, uh, if we don't, uh, complete the work schedule for that evening, we've agreed that we'll come back, uh, next somebody at work on it.
And, and just for a reminder for everybody, it was Larry Dean, Jim Bushy, Tim Wright, and Bob Hill, is that, did I capture that correctly?
Yes. Yep, and many thanks to those, uh, residents who volunteered for this. It's not a, it's not a walk in the park, we've got a lot of work in it, and and thanks to Todd too for participating. That's all I have on that, my search questions.
Mom, you know.
Great. All right, moving on, eight B. Do you see any project bid assessment and award?
I'll take this one, um, the town of Clear Lake, uh, received three bids, uh, for the CCMG project, uh, one from E N B paving, one from A P I, and one from Brooks. A public meeting was held on Friday, March seventeenth at two P M, whereby each sealed bid was opened and the total cost for each project component and the total bid amount, uh, were read aloud. D L Z was given the proposals to perform their final assessment and recommendation in preparation for tonight's council meeting. Uh, council was provided the outputs of that assessment. But I would like to make a motion, uh, to grant D L Z's representative, Todd Thurber, the floor to present his assessment and recommendation of the bid.
Just my, I'll second that.
I have a motion, second, all those in favor, you can signify with me.
Aye.
Who's saying? You have a board.
All right, so, uh, yes, uh, as Dan said, the bids were received on Friday, uh, took them under advisement, looked around, um, every one of them, uh, met the criteria that was, uh, established in the respects, um, and as you can see, uh, these were the results, uh, based on uh, equal playing field, uh, A P I, uh, was a little bid at the eight hundred thirty nine thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars. Any questions on that?
Just a question regarding A, A P I, uh, they're involved along with D Z L in the Clear Lake Cove road project, correct? And we had issues with Clear Lake Cove project.
Um, the, the issues that I'm aware of are, there was some subgrade issues and some drainage issues, but they did get it worked out, uh, as far as I'm, I'm aware, yeah.
Have anybody recently inspected Clear Lake Cove after, like, last week's rain?
I was down in, as far as everything I seen, and the only resident that I talked to is Daryl Cobal, and he has not had any issue.
That's my understanding, that Daryl and the cottage was further down, that was being inundated with water.
The other, the next two or three residents down have not reached out to me with any issues. So, and they are generally here when I'm here, wanting to talk to them. So, but I, Daryl would have, you know, I would assume Daryl would have mentioned that, hey, my neighbors are flooding out.
Yeah, I don't see that, but I'm a little familiar with, with certain properties over there, we used to live there. And, uh, at, I believe it's eleven hundred, um,
And it's all eleven hundred.
Well, it's that cottage, that small cottage across from Daryl. That's the one Schmitz.
Across the road.
Road, one Daryl, on the way. And then the new cottage, there's a catch basin right there.
And just right straight across.
Right up the valley. Yeah, and if you drive down there after rain, the catch basin isn't catching water, you rode up ten feet to the north, if there's water standing, and I'm just wondering if something prevention's gonna be done, or if that gets better, continue to retain water there.
Um, is this a result of the trucks cutting the corner short and rolling?
Well, it's sitting on the pavement, so, you know, it might be flooding off the road and backing up on the pavement, but uh, there's definitely a grading issue between, yeah, I don't want to resolve this issue here. The point is that A, A P I's wrapped up the project and we still have a small drainage there.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of anything on that side.
I just drive down there and you'll see where the, where the water is just in my directions west of the catch basin, right there, the Schmidt's new cottage, which is on the lake, and their little cottage across the lake, I think it's eleven hundred.
Catch basin is on the west side of that.
Yeah, yeah. And if you go north is where the water's standing. But the point is, is that we're talking about A, A P I, who we've struggled in the project, and here we are with a, a still existing problem, to my knowledge, and we're going to give them more work. I had a check. Mrs. Slusser, we have a resident here that lives on Clear Lake Cove, why don't we ask her specifically, have you noticed standing water on your road, or pebbles?
We call her mom. They grow up for us.
Well, for me, I haven't had any problem, because the problem started between my house and Cobal's. And, um, and I honestly have not been out walking the street lately. But I will pay attention to it.
It's right past the dog leg.
Right past.
Right past the dog, it's your house where the roads are dog legs, down to the dead end.
Yes, yes.
Right past that.
Yeah.
Yes, and then our old house up there on the hill.
Okay. I'll, I'll take some pictures.
Yeah, we, we, I have them, I don't want, I don't think we want to problem solve that drainage issue, but the, the point that I'm driving at is, is A P I, the contract that we want to use. There's more to this than just cost. Can't believe I said that.
So do you want to address that, or you're gonna address that? Uh, I mean, feel free, I can, I'll take a small stab at it, um, so, uh, based on, uh, you know, the, the award criteria stated in Indiana Code is lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, so, um, that is up to council and the legal council. The question is, is that a significant, uh, reason? And that is, that is up to, as I have, I, I have nothing to base, I, I can't reject a bid based on that.
Understand.
So, um, but looking at the costs, you know, is, is that what?
Nice question.
Yes.
When we were dealing with the Lake Cove, you were involved in the process. When issues arose or maybe plans had to change, was A P I responsive?
Yes. Yes. And, and anything that I deal with them or the guy there at construction, they are very, uh, open to, yeah, changes working out, or being able to work through, you know, unforeseen circumstances.
Thank you, yeah, when you saw the stuff, pop up, they're willing to work with you.
Yep.
Okay, and last night I heard that the, the fixes that were required, uh, were handled by A P I and within our budget constraints.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, project came in under, under contract.
Okay, I'd like to add, add to that conversation, there were, uh, there were three, I had a worries of, of the things that are in place on this set of projects that were not in place on Clear Lake Cove to protect us from these issues from reoccurring. The first and foremost was a clear and concise set of, of requirements that were for to be applied to, to each of the road projects that dealt from arranged from structural aspects underneath the road, which Clear Lake Cove, we, we, uh, we discovered clay uh, to be present, um, we now have coring samples, and we've now deliberately, uh, in this project set what the base, uh, materials are being made up of. Two was, uh, the drainage aspects, we're holding, uh, the, that's actually on a plan, we've actually engineered, uh, by virtue of the uh, surveys that were taken, how the water is gonna flow off the road, where it's gonna be collected, and made sure that wherever it's being collected, it's either sited appropriately, if it's a soil or a pipe. Uh, and three, we, um, we looked at, uh, the, uh, uh, access that residents have, uh, had during the construction period, uh, that was an issue that came out of the public meetings, uh, which had Clear Lake Cove representation. Uh, we've answered that in, in, in good detail on how we're going to manage, uh, access both from residents needing to attend uh, to, uh, their, uh, predefined appointments or emergency vehicles uh, that need to have access to the homes, uh, on, on the construction route for any given day. Um, and then we also, uh, found on Clear Lake Cove, there was, uh, although connected, it was two ways of a connection between D L Z and the day-to-day activities of A P I. And we bolstered that up, we've actually defined specific inspection points to drive to make sure that before anything's covered up, that we have a situation where the as implemented equals the have designed uh, drawings that A P I, or that D L Z has put in place. So although there are no assurances, uh, weather can disrupt a lot, uh, we have made, uh, very specific efforts to disconnect us from the, a particular, uh, paving contractor, uh, the issue she raised to that paving contractor by taking these deliberate steps.
Yeah, and I'd like to recommend, Dan, in the group for identifying gaps and putting process improvements in place to make the process stronger in the long run.
Yes, being objective makes things a lot better for everybody to understand what is happening. Is that a question? And I have one question, and I don't know if it falls here or somewhere else, Dan, and it's regarding the order of the projects. Um, because I know we've talked repeatedly, it came up at both of um, road town halls, I guess, if you want to call that, um, that part one, part three was not corway necessarily to order, and that as a council, we could decide what might be best. So I don't know, Dan, if we discuss that now or we move forward, and then after we determine who we're gonna get the bid to.
Yeah, I don't
I want it to be spread.
I don't know how you, you will prescribe the order. Or are you leaving that up to A P I? Um, if we choose A P I, or E N B, or some Brooks?
Usually that can be, and, and usually the contractor here will present an idea
Okay.
of, of what order they want to, so I would say that if we have a particular choice as a council, we should prescribe it.
And then, uh, Todd will, being the manager, will, uh, put it in place.
Will it, yeah.
You know, I mean, okay.
If we
Or are you gonna talk, I mean, my own personal, I mean, my opinion and what I think came out pretty loud and clear from the sessions is that part two should be started first. Because that could be potentially the more challenging, there's other things that can happen, that location, there's an awful lot of traffic to navigate. And then just going off of what we, or what we've heard, um,
Do
Yeah, go.
Do we want to tie, do we want to tie their hands? Because I'm thinking here is a scheduler, and I'm thinking you've got a different scope of each one of these projects, and this isn't A P I's only project. So if we tie their hands and say we need them to do our two first, or three next, and part one last, does that affect their ability to schedule and meet timelines when we can't see their whole picture? We don't know what other projects where they got specific equipment, where employees working, and where it may be able to fall in line, Todd, this, I guess it's more of a question to you, do you feel that we're going to do a disservice to the town if we set a pecking order? Or, remember the, the exact terminology you're using, Dan, but if we make a pecking order, are we tying our own hands?
Then I wasn't necessarily saying we said one, two, three, but I'm suggesting where to start, but obviously listening to them, listening to the road committees, um, just because I think that situation is different than the other two areas.
No, or pay a little bit effort to collaborate with, who, whatever contract we choose, and at least give them our perspective, and they can give us their perspective. And, and then it'd be nice before the kickoff that we can tell the community these are the three projects, we're gonna start here, and there, and there, based not on what we directly want, but what we collaborate with the contractor themselves.
Because with all of this, we're going to have to be tight on our reach alerts and not inundate people with when things are, I mean, people don't want to reach alert every day on what's going on, but we need to give them a heads up, we need to post on the website, you know, here's what the plan is, um. So I just think, I think we've all learned through much of this that transparent communication is critical. And I don't think any of us want the phone calls when somebody gets to the lake and they can't go around the lake on their golf cart on Friday night. We want to be able to manage that head and off to the coast. So that was my, that was just my comment, is I didn't want, uh, you know, because there was a lot of discussion around it, and that part doesn't necessarily correlate with order, start order. And I know Todd, at one point, you said they might be doing pieces of all of them at the same time, based on when they can get, you know, supplies or what happened.
Yeah, so that's certainly a collaboration we can have with them. Yeah.
Yes.
Any others?
I'm sorry, I don't know. But, um, wait. I'm talking about API.
Hang on.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
At the same time, all right.
Um, the neighbors at the end of my street are still having problems. And I don't, I I mean, I'm just telling you this because if you're making a decision on whether you go with API or not, um, those neighbors haven't been here a lot. But the second one from the marina is having some problems, and the one closest to the marina on the lakeside is still having quite a few problems. That haven't been taken care of.
Okay, would you just pay him a visit and understand?
Yeah.
They're not here, they're very difficult to get a hold of from my understanding.
I mean, if I didn't lose a word of the problem, I would have tried to resolve by now, I haven't been made aware of it.
Well, they had sandbags at their door, literally.
Those have been there for ever since I've been here, they've had sandbags at those doors.
Uh, my understanding was that wasn't until after the Clear Lake Cove.
They've been down there.
I think it's clearly a guy's action to follow upon that. And understand it and, uh, guy at council.
And maybe we, they, this, they aren't there often right now, and maybe we just, it requires a phone call. It's probably gonna not, you're probably not going to catch them, it just might be a phone call.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is the order, if we do change an order, that is that, is that ultimately affect the bid price, meaning? I mean, me thinking of it as as I bring in equipment to to dig out the base and I put the stones down at the right level, I would think from my perspective, it would be cheapest to do all of them, all of the projects at that point and do all that, right, and sequentially kind of move them along. But if, and it's just a question, right, if we don't do that and say, hey, we really want less impact overall, and therefore do this section first, does that drive the cost of the project up higher because now you have to bring the particular equipment back, you know? That's just a question from my perspective. Or is the bid the bid and it really doesn't matter, you know, they, what order they are, how they do it?
The bids, it it's, it doesn't matter how how they do it, um. Most likely they will. I don't, I don't want to say what their order of operations is going to be. But the way we got it stated is that, you know, they'll at least bring it. But they won't have multiple roads closed at one time. So when they're doing, say, part two, they won't have, you know, part three. Or, uh, all the way down as well, there may be some crossovers, again, depending on their schedule and their crews and everything else. But it's not like, uh, they're going to tear part two all the way up, leave it how it is, and then jump to part three, tear that all the way up. So they'll bring it all the way back up. If leased to, um, intermediate asphalt before they would jump to a uh, an another part.
I I was just surprised that I I hadn't even considered that that we were anticipating that the contractor would do start to finish part one before starting anything on part two, I mean, is that kind of what we're thinking? I mean, it would be, it would be wonderful if we get all that done in one team, but I mean, uh, actually.
That was not what, that was not my intention at all.
Yeah.
And I'm looking from also at an unintended consequence, as Dan has talked to us all about. Is so for example, if part two was done and part three, and all of those roads were torn up at the same time, most of us know what's going to happen. People are going to take that golf cart and they're going to go around, they're going to go on Lakeview, and they're going to go up to the cemetery, and they're going to cut down seven hundred.
Mm hmm.
And that's where our marshals are going to have to really be aware of what's going on, so we don't have any accidents like that. So Jim, I was not saying one complete to start to finish, that was not, and I think Todd understood where.
Yeah, I would be surprised if it had been all that way, I mean, or required that way. Uh, but it would be great if, uh, they could maintain accountability to some of those, you know, that to the subsequent sections that once they get started.
They will, because they need emergency vehicles through.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just for point of clarification, is one Richard.
Am I allowed to say that?
Well, he's, I'll, I'll put it to you.
Unusually.
Call it spread, I, I, I have a small, I can talk to after this, so. Okay. He also has road experience, I mean, he's a double dot per.
There's another person on my, um, on my street that I won't say their name, they did say API doesn't know how to deal with drainage issues.
So I'd like, anywhere public comment? I'd like to make a motion for close public comment.
I'll second that. Have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, so, I'm sorry. Did you check anybody on the Zoom for for that, by the way?
Nobody, nobody raised their hand, but.
All right, we're moving on then.
Okay, so I would, uh, uh, some or most of the questions are answered in the response to the action items, so they are posted on the the webpage for folks to to understand what the communication plan is, um, throughout each of the projects. Uh, and I hope that, uh, I'm not assuring that everybody's experience, you know, they'll write home about or or tell a party over, but, um, I think that, uh, that's my hopes that the experience on this road project far exceeds those of the past. So if they don't, it's important for us to hear about it because there's always opportunities to improve. I'll just leave it at that. Okay, um. Any other questions or comments from council?
Look at me.
I guess, uh, you missed a question that I wanted to ask to, uh, Todd, and that is, it had to be counsel that's that's looked at the bid. Um, at the last input meeting a month ago, uh, we received a lot of good input from the community, uh, quite a few folk over two day period. Uh, I'm just curious, um, it was said that you're going to go back and take that input, modify the bid proposal, and then move that forward. Uh, was that input modified? And can you tell me specifically what changes were made from the previous proposal to the final bid that that went out, uh, to be good?
Uh, some of the big changes were, uh, eliminating not all, you know, most of the site on West Clear Lake Drive, part three, and implementing swales along there. Um, we were able to reduce, um, trying to remember what all, and bring my nose with me, um.
George, can you, uh, are you referring to the two days of public? Yes, okay. So, um, at the end of those two days, I, uh, read back and got concurrence from from the attendees that I had captured the action names correctly. Again, those are posted, but, uh, the ones that were specifically addressed in the design was, uh, can the pipe load be located or located at south side of road between twenty-two and twenty-four West Clear Lake Drive be reduced twenty-one to eighteen inches? Um, DLZ, in fact, verified the drainage calculations and design is correct in size for the drainage surface, so although that was an action to bring up there, they verified and recommended that we stay with the current design, and that's the way it is today. Uh, the second one was to determine if resident at seventy-two West Clear Lake Drive wants proceed as design or change to a passive soil approach. Um, I held, uh, conversations with the resident at seventy-two West Clear Lake Drive, and they concurred with the design as it stood on fourteen. So there was no change that resulted from that. Um, the next one was provide an asphalt abatement to prevent grass and mud from trapping water on the road at both fifty-two and seventy-two West Clear Lake Drive, and that was added, uh, on reference sheets thirteen, fourteen, signed package. And then a fourth that was design related was assess the minimum continuous length of geo grid material required to bridge a length of bad soil. This was as a contingency to the risk that we may, uh, find some undesirable soils, uh, when we excavate, and so that that has been, uh, defined in the design drawings. Uh, if, did it pay a ten B or did it change? Yeah, ten B was, and that was the, uh, recommendation of the, uh, design engineers at GeoGrid.
It's, yeah, it's not a competition to both.
So those were the, those were the actions, the other two actions that you deal with access, uh, inspections and process inspections. And, uh, trying to define specific stay out times for people who might be vacationing over the holidays, which we've done. And, uh, and then one got, uh, uh, teed over to the road committee, and that was, uh, what's the process of residents to access the town's fragrance? So that's still work. Is that okay?
Yeah. Other discussion, I didn't. Now. So other, yeah, sure, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, one of the items that that comes up, um, are easements, and I suspect that both our attorney and this council would not want to put any drainage on private property without a legal easement. Is that the council's understanding?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think that was, I think that was one. I think we have none where we didn't have an easement, and I think, uh, like, no, I agree, George, and I think my takeaway from those two meetings was from what Don and Dan and Todd said, is we wouldn't move forward if we didn't have that easement.
Mm hmm, okay.
And I think Darren was here that night.
Okay.
That came on.
Absolutely.
So I agree.
Yeah, there's one solid one where there it's total private property uh, over on on West Clear Lake by Lakeview, uh, and then the other one is near Quiet Harbor, where there's a pipe going through, and and I suspect the, uh, property lines will be checked to make sure that we're, we are in fact in easement territory and not on private property, and if we are, we're going to have to get an easement if we, uh, encroach on any private property. Okay. I mean.
I thought you already mentioned that.
Is it okay, yeah?
Well, in the corner, Victoria. We said that if we need another easement, just, I don't know why you don't always matter, this would
But if there's an easement there, you know, I'm okay.
Yeah, they they place a pin out there, we're going to know right where it's at.
Yes. Because there are a couple of different, when you look at some surveys, there are a couple of different locations.
Well, I I think what gets confusing is the channel has changed.
Mm hmm, yeah. Yeah, they're to move.
Yeah, the channel move, which makes it hard to believe, but it has a difference.
Okay. You know, the, the, uh, I I just want to say a couple of things. Uh, number one, uh, I just, I to support good and safe roads, like I think everybody here at this table, everybody in the room. It certainly is common sense to have roadways that are that are capable for the, uh, uh, use that we put them to. Uh, second, I think it's great that we have the, um, road committee, Dan. Uh, I think that the guy has stepped in the right direction. Uh, I hope that in addition to the repairs and replacement, that we also address maintenance, I think that's something that we really not talked about, we just wait until it's supposed to wait, and there's some bandages that you can do to roadways to protect them, and as we research, and Todd, you'll agree that at the top of the list of of quality roads is maintenance first. You know, we talked about drainage, 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 but no, that's down lower, it's maintenance number one. And, uh, so that's, that is good that we're doing that. It's a little overdue, which makes me do my next point, and that is, there's, uh, I was hoping as we moved through this process that we would be transparent, have transparency with our community here. And, uh, as we, as we look at it, uh, from starting, let's go back to September to today, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. And we've gone along hoping that these questions would get answered, and they really haven't. And it's a great concern to the community, which I don't know if you guys hear, but I certainly hear. Um, API and the, and the issues that we had is was pointed out here is one of them. Another one was just the overall development of this plan, the road plan. Back in September, maybe a little before, there wasn't a road plan, and through Fitz and Star, there came one. And then we moved forward to the last, uh, input hearing, and we asked, who, it was asked, who on the council, who, who identified these issues of what our priorities were going to be for the roads? And the answer was dead silence. So we are moving forward with a project here that nobody will hold up their hand and say, I did it, I chose. And that gives our community great concern. Uh, the, the last item is, uh, the, the priorities that were picked, uh, we have twelve roads that are in worse shape than one of our projects. And yeah, it was a typo, but no, somebody selected a five over a one, a three, and a four. And we have one of the heaviest traveled roads is a three, but yet we're dealing with a medium travel road that's a five that we're tearing it up. So it's just, there's just great concern of questions that have not been answered, and so now we're at the point of saying, I do. And are we really ready to commit with unanswered questions?
I would challenge the, uh, the statement that there was no road plan, um, we've had road plans out there. I mean, granted, when COVID hit, it kind of got distorted a little bit, but it's been around basically ever since I've been here. So I, I, I doubt that you can say that we don't have that, and priority is based off of whatever comes out of those road plans. Uh, it basically, we leave it to the experts, the DLZs of the world to tell us what they rate.
Mm hmm. Well, I, I agree there, I knew there's road plans. I asked for, the community asked for. And they were never presented. They came out in in bits and starts.
Now, if you go back to council minutes, then I can give you council date where it had. These particular items in the council meeting minutes. So the public did have the opportunity. And were aware, but they just didn't, if they they didn't know it, they didn't take the time to go up for it. Because those those things are in the meeting minutes.
Well, I I was here. And I struggled with that question. Here at this table. And I walked away with no answers. I can go and pull the files of what was given to me with date lines on it. And starting in September, there wasn't much. And then we stepped forward until finally the GLZ plan of. Most recently, the one before the bid. And that was probably the one of the serious ones. Of what we're going to do, but not of the entire makeup of the lake and our needs. And and if DLZ. Pardon me, Todd. If if they were the ones that selected a road five over twelve road sections that were less. Then I have concern.
I'm just gonna make a comment because. I think we need to move forward. I appreciate your comments, George. I think we do need to move forward based on where we are from a timing. I do. I personally feel that we have. Given the community more opportunity than we did prior when the projects were narrowed down. And I do disagree Darren because I remember, I will never forget the night that I sat here asking questions and I was. Given the impression. That if. We voted to move forward, that we could still make changes along the way on what those projects were. And that was not accurate information. And I will own it that I should have gone directly to Todd or to the state to get that information. Instead of relying on somebody necessarily at this table. But I do think we need to move forward and just. That's the intent of the road committee. I do feel that we have the road plan now is available for anybody to go look at. Because I know when I identified your road plan, there was nothing that was made available to me as a council member. So, but I would like us to just go forward.
I'd like to make a comment too, and it's gonna go back to something that I mentioned when it came to Dan and the process of. We sit here a lot and talk about what's happened in the past. We can't change the past. We can't. But what we can do is learn from it and to Molly's point forward.
And I can disagree with moving forward. We're at a point that there's no first gear hidden. Got to go forward. But I was hoping that every step that I voted in favor of moving forward, that transparency would follow. Let them learn. Let's get transparency before the vote. So here we are at the altar. So let's take the next step.
So being the one person who's on the road committee and and providing some leadership there, I'll share my perspective on. On some of the root cause for what what we saw in the past. And that is there's no process. You know, it's it's I'll even call it ad hoc. An ad hoc gives you a, you know, a world of possible endpoints. And so the road committee is. And the ray of sunshine, I hope, in all of this is that the road committee is is committed to. Developing a process by which the. Particular segments of roads are prioritized in a five, ten, and fifteen year outlook. It will also define an annual reassessment of that plan so that we can account for any. Unknown unknowns that happened through a winter or a flood or whatever the case may be. And it will also involve public involvement in that plan. It will be communicated very clearly. It will also release and recommend a set of governing requirements by which our roads will be. And the projects will be defined. So the scope of the effort. Is is going to be defined to whoever the engineering firm is. It will also define a performance measurement process. How do we, how do we know we're doing a good job? In implementing our vision for our roads. And it'll make sure that it's sustainable within the budgets that the town has. These are all the the particular outputs that this road committee is being charged to produce. And so. I'm encouraged by, again, the votes who. Volunteer for this load of work. And I'm also very excited about delivering it to council. Because I think it is a ray of sunshine for the future of our load. And it'll it'll provide a lot of guidance, not only for us today, but those that follow us. It'll provide guidance to to Guy, who's the superintendent and and his follow-on person and any engineering. Company that works with us.
And Dan, I totally agree and and if I had to regret it, which was four years ago, but it doesn't work that way. So we're at a good point to take that step forward and I I view it as a very positive. Ray of sunshine on our road situation. So. Thank you for pulling it together.
You're welcome. Thanks for the comment.
Yeah, thanks for sharing.
Okay, so. Bring us to the next step here. Hearing, all bids were deemed compliant by DLZ. I move to approve and sign the notice of award of the twenty twenty-three CCMG Streets Project and all its components to API Construction. And Form ninety-six. This is my second thought. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by thing nine.
I.
All at the same time.
This is George. And based on my comments, I have seen.
Okay, motion carries. As a reminder, the accepted bid and town contractor agreement needs to be submitted to INDA by April sixth, twenty twenty-three. A special session will be called. To approve the town contractor agreement once received, along with the evidence of performance payment bond. And certificates of insurance from API.
So we'll have a special session now on April sixth. My understanding.
Yeah. Usually a couple of weeks. Or do you think it'll be sooner? I absolutely. First of all, tomorrow, obviously, we get parent around and we're hoping to get it by. For the week, for this week versus next week. Have it soon and later and get it to INDA signature there to this. Okay, maybe next week.
Yeah, I think we need to get it so we can.
Yeah, so if there are any steps, if there are any days that. Can't support.
People that's feeling it, you have kind of that area. Yeah.
That was a prior.
Yeah, you're two weeks.
Yeah.
And by the time you take that, you're. Yeah.
Yeah, so it is Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday available.
Wednesday.
Wednesday is the preferred if we can get the material back. And I want to make that.
So twenty-nine or. That would do, twenty-eight or.
Or to provide funding that is also.
Now, that's what I'm thinking about this. Yeah. Meaning. So, one, March, twenty-ninth, special session.
At seven. Sure. Damn. Moving backwards now, monthly report. Financial report, Nathan.
Yeah. Well, that was really good information from everybody. I guess. Important stuff. First one I have up here is the appropriation report for the month of March. For everybody that doesn't know, the appropriation report is all the different appropriation accounts inside of the two different fund. Accounts that we. Use to general sewer funds. So if you look through this report and all the different appropriation accounts inside the fund accounts and the balances. I'm gonna have this on file. If you have any questions, feel free to come and ask me about it. This is kind of a longer report. It was a lot of different appropriation accounts. Right after the next slide is gonna be the fund report. And the fund report is for much of month of March as well. This is. The report that Molly was and a couple of other members were referencing. It has all the current balances for all of our different accounts. And all the different funds. So you can go down through this. If you have any question, feel free to give me a call or let me know with part names. Next report on here is the revenue report. Revenue report is pretty straightforward. All the money that we have coming into us. For the month. If you have any questions about that, feel free to give them. Or let me know.
I just want to say thank you for adding Chris in.
Yeah, no problem at all. Um. And then after last month's meeting. Dan, well, actually, no, we're gonna go back to. The next slide is gonna be for the month of. January voucher. And that date is gonna be through December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, through one seventeen, twenty twenty-three. So I started on the nineteenth. So this involved, it happened a little bit before we had to get this all straightened out and finalized. On this voucher, there is forty general warrants coming out of the general account. There's twenty-one warrants coming out of the sewer account. The total for the general account is forty-three thousand, seven ninety-nine, three cents for that month. Coming out of the sewer account is twenty-four thousand, eight eighty-three, forty-five. For this voucher, I'm gonna be asking the council to approve sixty-eight thousand, six eighty-two, and forty-eight cents. If there's any questions about that, let me know. So if I need to take a minute or so, we'll go about one.
I I did have a couple of questions. Sure. And I know this goes back to January nineteenth, but we have a charge from M and C. And Guy, this probably directed you as much as anyone. For professional services, I got a catch basin at seven oh eight South Clear Lake Drive. Was that a new install?
Yes.
And there's a catch basin adjacent on the parking and on the drive.
Was it was the water was flooding the roadway there? And that was ours to listen to stop flooding, let's put that in.
So it needed two catch basins?
It tied the new one into the existing one. The road. Right there was where it crowned or the road would heat. The road was not allowing the water to get to the other catch basin. That's why we put that one in.
And is that tied to the line and it goes to the lake?
Correct.
Okay, and that's a private line?
I don't know. Though there is an easement on that one, I believe.
Okay. If you check and see if there's any. And then one other, we had some. Grinders. From CPM Supply, seven thousand dollars grinder rebuilds. How many, you know, how many there were?
It was either four or five.
Four or five, yes. Thanks. That's it.
No, that. That was three or four.
Yeah, I think you're right, based on your report. I I think.
I don't I don't recall the report then.
Yeah, I think he did it during his superintendent report.
Yeah.
You're the number if the, but I don't remember. I think if we look.
Yeah, cause I want to go back to the notes.
I think.
Go back to the report.
I think Guy captured that on his.
I agree that in my report, what I have. And and all of that.
But I don't think I heard the exact number, but I do believe that Guy had it in.
Lawn crop reference.
So page to the report. Thank you.
All right, thanks guys.
And then I just wanted to say thanks, Nathan, for adding some of the reports. Like I I used the fund report for my own site financial, so appreciate you adding that.
And then I also added on that. February, I'm gonna get to that in a second. The next voucher is gonna be the corrective voucher from August, February, but it's from January eighteenth through June twenty. I'm calling this February about your corrected or amended document from last meeting. I went through and made the corrections that we noted in the last meeting. So this was all corrected. If there's any questions. Feel free to let me know, but we already went through this one.
Yeah, no. Give impressions, but.
And then the final report was one that Dan asked me to include. For the town council members and general public. It's just the fund report from February first through February twenty-eighth. So all these reports are always available. You can always come and ask me and I can always, you know, provide anything you need, but. Yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to call at any time. Pretty much all I have for my financial report for this month. Let's move on to the next. Everybody, yeah, third period.
All right, market was reported. Uh, month of February. For total hundred sixty-eight hours through six hundred eighty-one miles, zero. Or zero hour would move, obviously. That's there. Police department had seven cases, sheriff's office had four within the pound and two within the pound shooter. Had four traffic violations, written, and one traffic arrest was made. For the case that we had, we had two D N C assists, one property damage crash from property damage. One on the pure premise and one traffic offense. Sheriff office in the town of Clear Lake had three alarms and one medical. And then in the township, they had one property damage crash, one personal injury crash. During the ice storm, the Durango was damaged from a pervert tree falling on it. Got an estimate, just over four thousand dollars. That was turned into the insurance and the vehicle is going to be scheduled for repair on May third and it'll be out of committee for at least two weeks.
First, on the property damage, is that anything we need to be concerned about?
Fun for the clerk, please, Colonel?
Yes.
That would be for the Durango, I'm saying.
This will.
Yeah.
We can bet against you.
Yeah, okay.
That would have been a lot. You know, it can see themselves and everything.
Thank you.
There it goes.
No.
All right, fire department report.
All right. For the month of February. Yep. The town had two mutual aids. One medical assist, one CO2 investigation. And one firearm. For Clear Lake Township, we had one medical assist. Two firearm and one structured fire. We are currently engaged with the Fremont Fire Department. On discussions for a future contract and we'll keep the public up to date as we move through. Year to date. I did have to go back and double check because the numbers were exactly the same. However. They're accurate. Reports are on file. And you can request any of them as well.
So how many does that mean?
Me next. All right, we finally got our first permit for the year. One oh one building sport. They're doing a garage home remodel. That model is. Quite a bit going on, but they're not done moving the home, so they're using existing stuff there. Next planning commission meeting isn't until five two twenty thirteen and seven o'clock. Next B Z A meeting is scheduled for eleven twenty three. We will have hearings. That night and the stuff will be made available shortly, actually, so that way people can review. Projects. Working on the U D O update twenty twenty two oh two, the proposed amendment of the LA structure standards. Feel like I predicted something. The feedback forms have been out there for a while. I've been getting quite a bit of input for the plan commission, so. Hoping that those continue to come in, but it seems like it slowed down a little bit. So. Again, it's available online or here at the office. Someone wants to come and pick that up. Comprehensive plan, so. After talking to a few. People out in the planning world, and I, I think there is another way I wanna address this, and after talking with Bill as well. I think we wanna address this comprehensive plan in a two-phase process. Phase one's gonna be community engagement. Which basically is gonna establish our phase two and how we're gonna move forward there, whether it's gonna be a major amendment or a minor amendment based off of public input. After talking with Hometown Initiative, Ground Rules, and I have the reestablish connection with Regional Plan, the Regional Planning Commission as well. All the two have agreed to, once I get that. Stuff worked on, they're gonna give back a project. Estimate based off of that stuff working off of doing the two phases rather than trying to do a whole, like. Idea what the cost will be, because our costs might change depending on what our public input is. So I'm hoping that gives us a better idea there. Hometown Initiative was run in by Amy. I can't remember her last name, but she actually used to be one of our zoning commissioners in the past. So she's familiar with our area and Ground Rules actually did our mess plan and U D O updates in the past as well. So he's very familiar with it and I. Reached up to a couple of people in the area to see who they recommended as well, and this is kinda what it came back to, so. I did talk to Mr. Hughes. He is, they're still working on the inside. As soon as the weather warms up, he's planning to peel the top off and then everyone will see a bunch of change to the outside. So, but they have been working on it though. And then. Dan asked me to go to the G I S support group. Which I was basically a flower in the wall. I know G I S, but the people that were in this meeting are G I S administrators. There are people that deal with G I S every day. So I didn't have much to actually add to it, so, but I did learn quite a bit. This particular support group was talking about the data harvest, which is actually an export of all of the G I S data to the state. State has a really good response rate from a lot of the communities in the state to make sure everybody has up-to-date information. The other thing they talked about was the B S. B I S, which is Boundary Annex Survey, which is actually submitted to the Census. And ours is done. I don't know who did it, but ours is done. But basically, any, you know, if we annotate our ads or change our corporate limits in any way, it gets reported as the United States Census Bureau, so. Other than that, so working on full block streets, starting to come down on that. But else for metric tracking, they're available online now, under forms and metrics. Anyone in the public can download it and get all the data for like guys. It goes back to thirteen, mine goes back to nineteen and then. Yours goes back to twenty. Yeah, so, but they can actually isolate out the information and it's interactive for the resident, so. And then, just to keep up with the reporting top on mine, cuz I'm still using it for driving around right now. I did put a hundred fifty miles on it this month. And the total mileage is fifty four eight oh five.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions and a comment. Yeah, you mentioned Plan Commission and B Z A that we have hearings, but the boxes are empty. Is there?
So I haven't, I, the stuff for the B Z A for the cases, the hearings. Based off of our past reports, those things have been empty until the actual hearing was conducted.
Okay.
I have stuff that's available, but the information to the hearing is not available to the public yet. It will be this, this week. But I haven't put anything on the paper yet, so until that's done, it stays quiet. So it's just, it's just not good to you guys that we will be having hearings, but. Which, though, it'll be available, reach alerts, and everything's gonna go out according to the U D O. And state.
That's a lot of times it's available. The reach alert will be.
Yeah.
A lot of times it's available.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the comprehensive plan, I did wanna say thank you. You're doing a lot of great work on that. One thing that I would. Just in the spirit of our learnings with vendors. Is if maybe they could give you a presentation that you could share with us and not, you know, twenty slides, but maybe five slides. Or if they were able to come and even present and take questions from the residents. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My monthly, my monthly hour. Were two hundred and twelve, Denver's were a hundred and thirteen. I had zero road cut permits, zero demo permits and two letters of non-injection. We had nineteen locates for the month, nine alarm calls. We replaced five grinders, repaired zero and set up six. I have. Newer repaired pumps ready to be placed in the system. I have nine total, seven which are new. Two are remanufactured ones and I still have four in the boxes. That can be set up. Our average daily flow. Was twenty two thousand one hundred and eighteen gallons per day. I had a quote to have six more pumps repaired at C E M. They're actually pumps we took up. Right after the ice storm, we had grinder call after grinder call after grinder call. And I wanted to see if. Something was. During power outage caused it, but not a single one of them failed for the same thing. So that shot that theory that we were holding, we could figure something out. But they did quote me for those six pumps. It comes out to an average of thirteen hundred and twenty three dollars a pump, which is about half, little less than half the price of a new one. So far, everything I've gotten back has been. Just as good as new. Cuz they're replacing everything other than the housing, basically, in the bike. So I'm, I guess I need approval to get that repaired or do that repair. Maybe seven thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and thirty eight cents. Would be the total, approximate total on the six of them. Maybe a little less, maybe a little more, so.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the refurbishments of grinders not to exceed eight thousand dollars.
I have a motion to have a second.
It's Molly on second deck.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion three.
Well, street department, oh, sewer truck mileage for the month was getting a hundred eighty eight miles. Street department summary. We did get the post installed on seven hundred east for the radar signs. We've not gotten the signs put up yet. I hope to have those up by mid-April. I had replaced the street signs that were ran over. And stolen over the last. Well, part of them were ran over during the ice storm because nobody could see them. Those have been replaced. The one that was stolen, I got that replaced last week. And I'm going to. If it doesn't snow this week, I'm going to go around and put my white flags in for locates for the golf cart signs to go up. Every time I wanted to do that, it's setting, you can't see the white lines and the flags in the sun. And street truck mileage for the month was five hundred and thirty five.
Yeah, I, that was a print. Obviously dealing with some extended power outages. There are situations that come up that you are very well aware of. Is there any advice you would give the general public when it comes to flushing toilets during a power outage?
Your house is owned by a generator. That, and that generator is not. Connected to your grinder. You overflow and there's absolutely nothing I can do for you. So. If you have a generator, I strongly recommend that you have the power for your grinder come directly through your residence with a disconnect box and power your grinder. From your generator.
Guy, do you think that'd be a good thing to maybe throw on the website so we can get some more public visibility on that?
Once I have thirty seconds, three, and I've been trying to think of how to word that, but it seems that for the last five weeks I have been bombarded. I hope you got it. So.
Anything for guys?
No, he covered mine when it's about card signage.
I've just been off the walls. Thought relative to road signs and that, let's get some apple packs. So my, in particular. My latest one, the one that I was tired of being removed and it was finally stolen. I actually dug three foot in the ground, didn't put wide. Drove the post in, then I folded a piece of an old road sign to that and covered it back up. It's going to be a little more difficult to pull out of the ground. And that one was more of a safety issue than just a roadside. It was a fire lane one on East Clear Lake Drive to the dryer. So.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
I think my idea is more fucking.
Everyone can put that on the website, so we all. Definitely.
All right, council reports. Just one update from the last meeting, Mr. President. We did send the. Verbiage that council agreed to for the Gulfport ordinance to legal for review. At the same time, we also never received. Feedback from the parking ordinance that everybody should have received during the weekend. That you guys an extra copy of that, so. Everybody can get back up to speed on that should we decide to move forward. And all the information from legal, we should have a council as we receive it.
From H R. There's no updates that I, that I, that I've received, so all is quiet to understand. No changes.
Were you able to find the job descriptions?
I, I have just one and I haven't called Nathan till tomorrow morning.
Just look, I saw your email. And Dan will give you a heads up to what I'll, what I'll call you about.
I just have a question on the G I S system and at the unedible access for all of us. I know this has been on the thing since September.
It should be out there.
Oh, okay. Can we, can. As I figured it'd be helpful for all of us on council, but also for the road committee too.
Yeah, well.
Be helpful for your.
Yeah, I mean, you've been on it, right? Yeah, I mean, I, whoever wants access. Yeah, if we're having a problem getting access, just kind of pecking on, right? It's up there, right?
Great. I, I missed that that was available to us. Thank you. Yeah. I'll post on my stories.
Just an FYI, when you get in there, there's, there's gonna be a lot of dots. And when he did all the van hall numbers, which I believe were around fifty. This does not necessarily include drains. Or, you know, private drains and stuff like that, because he couldn't walk through the people's yards and figure out. Where they went. So he may have some of them, but not all of them.
Oh, thank you.
Fair enough.
The only other thing I have is I know that there are some B Z A appointments. I'm waiting for one last. Person to get back with me and thanks to the council members and public that gave me input. And I'm waiting for an answer from Mr. Hawk. Something that I need to clarify, so. I hope to have those appointments by the end of the week. Anybody else? General discussion. Open up to the public.
With regard to that, just on a personal basis here, for the B Z A, the last year I was on an alternate for both the Plan Commission and B Z A. I have not been contacted, so. I don't know what the status is.
I, and I'm, that's some of the stuff I need to clarify.
Okay.
Mr. Hawk.
All right, I just. If I'm gonna be at the.
I know, I know that they.
Okay, thank you.
It's like to thank the council and the street department and the police department for those who are speed signs on seven hundred east. Thank you very much, very much. Yeah, that'll be eye opening.
It will be interesting. Way to motorcycle season, I'm really tired. Where, where approximately are they?
The south. Those, why do you ask?
The south sign is located right at the welcome to Clear Lake sign. And the. North sign is. About the first telephone pole north of West Clear Lake Drive.
On the west side of the road.
Yeah. Thank you. Good point.
Will he be sharing that data? Sheriff's Department? Sheriff's Department? I can, but I don't know that'll.
They live right around the corner.
That'd be Snyder, he's working here at Focus. They will come up this way.
What else? I've entered a motion to adjourn. This is Brett. I will make the motion to adjourn.
Molly on second.